...to the allegiance led by Councilman Starks.
I think we have a number of Irish people in our community, social beings and kind of today I'd like to offer a Irish blessing. May the road rise up to meet you, may the wind be always at your back, may the sunshine warm upon your face, the rains fall soft upon your fields, and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hands.
One allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Here.
Conley, Evans, Lasky here, Mace, Starks, first.
Here. We'll have the reading of the minutes at the regular council meeting held on March 3rd, 2015. The motion by Brian, the second by Justin, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. I just have it. Communication.
I have one. It's from Antoinette Alish, Salute LLC president. I would like to notify Tamakwa Council with our interest again in operating the Tamakwa's swimming pool concession stand for the 2015 summer season. I understand a rental fee and electric for the stand would be my responsibility as was last season. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
I talked to Dave Mace, the chairman of the Recreation Youth Committee, he asked if we could refer that to his committee and take action about it.
Make a motion to refer to the Recreation Youth Committee.
Second. Your motion by Justin, the second by Tom, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. I just have it. Okay, next on the agenda is special business, we have Leona Rigga who is here, she's the coordinator of the Tamakwa Community Arts Center.
I don't think I have enough copies for everybody, so if you don't get one and you want one, just let me know. As part of the Arts Center and the Safety Initiative, the past year we've been working on what's called the Dear Tamakwa Project, and we have been collecting letters and stories that we ask people to write in telling us what do you like about Tamakwa, what don't you like about Tamakwa, what are your hopes, what are your dreams for the future. And the reason that we started this was because we had noticed when we did surveys with the Safety Initiative that there is either a great love for our community or a great dislike for our community, I'm sure that sounds kind of weird. And so we wanted to try and identify through letter writing, why is there such a great difference and how can we get people to somehow meet in the middle, somehow understand each other a little bit better. And so the letter writing process is still going, but now what we're starting to do is plan the festival. And the festival is actually going to be all of these stories brought to life. So what people wrote, the good, the bad, the ugly, that we asked them for, you're going to see it performed and portrayed in the streets of town. And we've been working with Touchdown Theater out of Bethlehem to help us put all of this together. So what you're going to see on your first page is actually the proposed walking path, and that's really why I'm here tonight, is because I'm hoping that we can kind of just look to a walking path, talk about it, it will require involvement and participation of everybody, from our police to our fire police, to our residents, businesses, everybody, as many people as possible, and it is going to be quite tricky. The good news is I am a really good coordinator, I can really plan events, so I promise you that we will do our best to make this as easy and seamless as possible, but I do need your help. And so if you look at this, what they would like to do, Touchdown has suggested that we start at the Spruce Street parking lot where the Tamakwa Family Practice is, down along railroad and Spruce in the corner there. What they want to do is start everyone on a walking path, the walking path would take them down Cottage Avenue and up behind and then all the way until you get to, is it Nestor Park Street, which is where the American Legion is. When you get to the American Legion, I would then need to talk with them about allowing us to use their lot. And one of the things that they highlighted in the letters were their fondness of block parties. So there you kind of maybe see a little bit, it would be like a stop on the trail, shall we say, you would stop there, you have a little bit of entertainment, there might be what they call a taste of Tamakwa there, where maybe you can pick up different foods that are special to our area, and then you get on a fire truck, and then the fire truck would take you up Broad Street till you get to St. Jerome's. And what would happen in that block is we want the residents to kind of come out of their homes, decorate the front of their homes in a way that would represent a community group or an organization that was represented in the letter, something that's very special to people, whether it's past or present. And as the people are coming on the fire trucks, they will actually be the spectators, and those who live in that area, the businesses, the residents, would actually be kind of our performers, shall we say. They would be acting out the letters and the stories and the things that people wrote about. When we get to the corner of Broad Street there, it'll be a little bit of a function, hopefully, on the St. Jerome's lot, we're going to work with St. Jerome's. Then what we would do is we would come down below Lafayette Street, and I believe it's still considered Berwick Street, but it's like a little dirt lot that kind of runs below Lafayette, there's parking there, and then it runs out to, not Berwick, what is that called?
Hagerdy.
Hagerdy Avenue, there we go, Hagerdy Avenue. It'll run down into Hagerdy Avenue, and then behind the train station. Along that entire path, you're going to have some walking, you'll have some riding on a fire truck, you'll have maybe some interaction, maybe on a trolley, we're not sure yet, there's a lot of planning that we still have to figure out on how people are going to get from one spot to another. But along that entire trail, they're going to see things. We have purchase big large orbs and balls that will be production screens, we've ordered fabric that we can drape and use as tunnels, and as people go through this experience, they really truly will see what was written in the letter, whether it's through visual photographs or just a projection of words. And what our hope is, is that people will understand that there are some really dark things in our community, which is why Cottage Avenue was chosen. In that area, it's a little dark, it's a little scary, so we want people to get that feeling that there are truly people in our community that are afraid and don't feel safe here. And then we also want to bring it to light and say, hey, you may not feel the best in your community, but let us show you what is really great about your community, and kind of take them through that path, until you get to the end at the train station where we'd like to have some sort of a celebration. And so that's what we're looking at, if you look at this sheet here, it's going to be your most important, because it is the full layout, everywhere we have a little circle, that means that we're going to need some help with traffic direction, there may be some street closures that we'll need for a short while, and what I tried to do is on the second page, lay out for you what those needs are, so that you can look at them, you can review them, we can talk about them, if there's concerns or issues, we can say, hey, I think this might be a problem, and then we have two choices, you either have to redirect, or else we have to find a solution to the problem to make it possible. Any questions as of yet?
When is it?
The date is August 4th, it is a Tuesday. Some of the things that the Dear Tamakwa group is very conscious of is the fact that there are going to be businesses on a Tuesday, they're going to be open, so closing down the streets on a Tuesday evening might affect their business. But we will work to talk to each of the business owners, get their buy-in, get their input, get their participation in that, because we don't want them to feel like we just came in and tried to take over their space while they're trying to operate a business.
Should we park them on the American Legion?
The parking lot at the American Legion?
Boroughs. It doesn't belong to the American Legion.
I don't think we're at the American Legion.
On, on, uh, Nestor Park.
On Nestor Park, but I think they're just kind of coming through.
I thought you were going to do that.
You said you made it the park and you want permission from the Legion to park them.
Oh, the American Legion, um, yes, so it's the borough's lot then, okay, so then you would need your input and your participation, your acceptance of using that space then.
Are we getting fire trucks?
We're going to contact the fire company. We're asking if they'll drive a fire truck that night. Our hope is that each fire company would participate with one truck, that each fire company can be represented.
But, but it's not, so, so, it's the riding, and I got a plate of coppers, the riding on fire in the block.
It's the riding on fire in this block, okay, and tell me what we can do about that.
There's only one that can do it.
That's our antique retire, and that's special agreement, special insurance, just for, just for a certain thing for fire companies.
Okay, so there's only one fire company that has permission to do it?
Well, not really. They have one truck that they can do it on, but...
That's it?
Technically, we're not supposed to do that.
And there's a rider.
We're getting a ride on.
And there's a rider, insurance policy, so if it owned that entire truck, so it's not an easy thing. The only thing that I would suggest is if you, if you don't do buses, if you contact Mike Kitsock for the School of Historical Society.
Okay.
They have an open air bus, an antique open air bus, that may fit the bill even better.
Okay, I think they wanted the fire trucks because in the letters there was a lot of writing about block parties, and everybody writes, "Fire trucks downtown," and "block party."
Oh yeah, that's right, I had to have him explain that one.
That's where it's coming from. Everybody knows that, everybody writes that, it's in all the letters.
It's called an insurance waiver between the two groups that own it, that it's licensed and insured for that event only, for that occasion, that's it. We don't own it, we have a partial ownership of that vehicle with the School of Fire Museum that is licensed as an antique and able to do that event under insurance rider by both parties, that's it. So the event not being this one, it's licensed for one event for that, but my point is, if we get ahold of Mike Kitsock and try to get the open air bus down, that would probably work, I don't know, saying the fire trucks or whatever would participate somehow, but that's a regular bus that you can load a triple amount of people on, and it's open, it's like a, a verbal bus.
I think there's a lot of, if you look, if you do this, there's a lot of details that are going to have to be looked at, and that'd be...
Yeah, a lot of details, yeah. This is just to give you an overview, so that I'm not coming to you in July saying, hey, I want to do this, but I've already done all this planning. Touchdown just met with us like two weeks ago and gave us this information, so that I could come to you now and say, hey, we want to do this. If fire truck ride isn't possible, that's okay, we'll look for an alternative, but in addition to that, if somebody had showed the fire company was represented, because they were very strong in the letters, and you don't want to leave something like that out when it's in front of your community.
Are you going to have public meetings where people can come and help you?
There will be meetings, it'll be in the newspaper, and we'll schedule them, we're going to ask for participation, and we'll say, we need people who will do this, and we need people who will do that, and then each group that's focusing on specific section will meet, there won't be one huge large group with everybody, we'll kind of keep it section by section depending on what each person's interests and skills are for.
Is this on National Night Out, is this in addition to?
It's on National Night Out, and it's part of National Night Out. So this year in Tamakwa, what we're doing in National Night Out is bringing you Dear Tamakwa. So it won't be held like it was the past two years down at the Arts Center on Pine Street, this year and this year only, it will take you on a kind of parade through the community, because that was our focus.
So this will be National Night Out?
This will be National Night Out, and a lot of the groups that participated in National Night Out before will be asked to participate, they just might be in a different location. So some of the stops that you'll see in these slides, they might be asked, would you stay at the St. Jerome's location, or would you stay at the American Legion, or would you stay at the Tamakwa Family Practice lot? So all the groups that we asked to participate before will still be included, they'll just be spread out throughout the event.
And is this right or shined?
It is, yeah, it is, and we're kind of worried about that only because of some of the projection and the lighting, so that's on the top of the list of what is the backup plan.
So they still want to do their kids' carnival that night?
And they will, and that's actually great, because their kids' carnival is in coordination with National Night Out, and part of the letters were memories of the carnivals that are with help down at the Tamakwa Family Practice lot. So it's kind of fantastic, the kids' carnival served last year, they've already got a plan in place, I've been working with them and talking with her on how we can kind of keep that flow going and some of the letters that were received. Anything else that you see on here that might be a major problem that you want to bring up now? If not, my email, you can always email me or call me and say, I had some time to move over your documents and think about the path, and I have some questions, I have some concerns, I can always come back, and I can always bring my groups from Dear Tamakwa, they just missed your, tonight Touchdown was unavailable, they're working on a big production that's coming out April, but we can always come back and give you another update. I would work very closely with Chief here, who works on traffic control, also I'm hoping for the fire.
Do you want to plug your fundraiser?
Do I want to plug my fundraiser? My fundraiser? Well, mayor, there's a fundraiser, are you part of my fundraiser?
I think so.
I have a fundraiser at the Arts Center, for those of you that don't know, it is a nonprofit organization. I will tell you, there are probably about forty to fifty volunteers that keep that Art Center running, I'm the only paid employee, and we couldn't do it without them, but it is also a challenge to do all the things that we do, from theater to concerts to art classes, on the budget that we have. And so we are doing a fundraiser this year to try and help boost things along and keep us going into the next year, because we really believe in the mission of what's happening. If you're not sure about that, I encourage you to check out our website, find a volunteer and talk to them, and they'll tell you why they're there. So if you want to join us on that night, I have invitations, send a message to everybody, or if you've already gotten one, I encourage you to come, it should be a fun night, I'm looking forward to it.
Which fundraiser are you discussing?
The Big Benefit Concert that you're performing, it's April 24th, is the date, it's Friday night.
More than this myself.
It is one.
Tell us more about.
Well, your council...
The mayor and I are going to sing a duet.
Your council president and your mayor are performing as well as the president of St. Luke's Hospital, so...
It's not just us, we do, there is a band that's supporting the act, I don't think so.
It's definitely a show that can't be duplicated, it's definitely a show that you won't see anywhere else, so if you're somebody that's out there looking for an original show, want to have some good laughs, we encourage you to attend and join us and check out your...
What time?
Oh, I hear the seven.
And then do you, or do you just make a donation?
You can just make a donation, you want a seat where you sit and watch the whole performance, we are selling seats, there are tickets that you have to purchase. You can also get your name in the program, you can send a note to your favorite council member, or to your president, and to your mayor, and to the president of St. Luke's, wishing them whatever you want to say, or you can even just send a nice note to the Arts Center volunteer, thanking them for their service and for what they do.
And if you want to spend enough money, Mike will write a song for you.
A song.
He's going to write a song for you. Absolutely.
About whatever we want, or?
Yeah, you tell them the topic, they'll write you...
Depends on how thick your wallet is. It's a fundraiser, folks, so, it'll be a lot of fun, and the mayor, thanks, I'm looking forward to it, the mayor and I have had our roundabout here at the council meeting too, so it's nice to work together on a private class.
I will say, this is my first council meeting that I've ever attended, I've lived in Tamakwa since I was nine years old, so this is new water for me, even just working at the Arts Center, I spent all my life working outside of my community. So this is the first time that I'm delving into my own area, because I believe in what we do, and I believe in the people that we have here, and I want my children, as they're being raised, to want to stay here. I already have one that moved to Florida, and I'm begging her to come back, like, I know it's nice and sunny there, but can't you just come home? So I don't want all my children to move out of the area, I want them to find positive things there with Angela. So I thank you for your time, I look forward to the upcoming event and the participation that we can build together, so thank you.
We're going to sign this to the Parking Traffic Committee, I'll look with Leon if there's on any of the issues with the streets that need to be closed, or if there's issues, anything that you, that's okay.
I'll call Mike Kitsock, please.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, Leon, you own that park, not that.
That's what they told me when you were on, is that you own, so that, that's good.
Girl managers reporter.
Well, I guess the first thing that I wanted to talk with you about tonight is our demolition bid opening. Everyone should have a copy of the bid tabulation sheet from yesterday. Dan Schrader and I opened the bids, and we gave out four packages and three responses, and you'll see the results there in the sheet in front of you. We have a budget of approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars in CBBG funds, so I, and we have, what is it, seven properties, I believe, that we put out today, so we don't have enough to, enough funds to do it all, unfortunately, we'll have to pick and choose, but I'm looking to see how, what council's feelings are, about what priorities will be for demolition. If you can offer some suggestions if you want.
If we had 133 and 135 Gates Street, 216 Pitt Street, 160, 162, 162 and a half, if we had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 properties, those 6 properties sold ninety-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars, we have ninety-nine thousand dollars, and 860 dollars more, but that gives us a big advantage to the, my opinion.
If Dan and I crunch some numbers, and that would address the most properties, the least amount of money.
If the 252 tied down, it's not going to get any less expensive, no matter how many times we bid, it's still going to come back a big number.
Right, the site conditions there are just very difficult. As I'm sure you recall, it's situated on a very steep hill, because it's a steep hill both front and back of the property. Not only demolition, but backfilling is a, is a problem, so that's, that's why it's double, roughly double what a normal project would be, because of the site condition.
Is there an issue with Spruce Street property that's on the tax sale?
Yes, we got a repository notice on 160 Spruce Street.
So what does that exactly mean?
Well, that was put up for tax sale, didn't sell, then it was put up for judicial sale, apparently didn't sell, so the final step in the process is the repository sale, that's when it sits in a repository, and someone can walk it off the street and put down a minimum bid, but it has to be approved by the borough, the county, and the school.
So if it's applied, it's already on the demolition list, so we might demolish it? How do we get off the repository sale, saying?
We probably want to deny it.
We want to deny it, indicating it is called violations and the borough's desirous of purchasing it after a repository demolition, maybe loaned and demolished, but you're not going to be able to keep it off the sale by the demolition.
Have we been successful in the past of denying repositories yet?
Yes.
So, well, we could buy it, I mean, so we could buy it?
Well, no.
You don't have to buy it, it's a fair option, if somebody else walks in and buys it, then we're tearing down a property that we don't own.
So probably buy it for a dollar.
No, it's eleven hundred sixty dollars.
Two thousand bucks. But somebody's already put that...
That's the minimum bid, that's awesome, Eric, but then... You could, you, anybody can go in and buy that repository sale right now for one thousand one hundred sixty dollars, somebody went in there and said, I'm going to buy it for one thousand one hundred sixty dollars.
Or, in your all terms, if you purchase it, then you're in a situation where you can't really just tear it down, well, give a notice and work through your normal steps, if you
That's Councilwoman, Kevin, did we find out what his intentions were for that property? Because we knew it was on the demolition list, and what's he saying?
Code officers, Josh and Matt, both spoke with the bidder. Apparently, his son owns the properties next door, and they weren't doing anything with those properties because of the condition of this one, supposedly.
So they, you're talking about 162 and 163?
So they act out of a repository.
So their plan is to acquire this one next door, because they're all in bad shape, of course, they're on the demolition list, the plan is to acquire this one and then either demolish it or rehab it. They spoke with these individuals a couple times, and all they have is a rough plan, nothing, I'm told in writing, you know, like plans or process and that, so...
So they already own the two bladed properties next door?
The son doesn't.
Which bladed properties do they own?
The ones on the demolition list.
Sixty-two is sixty-two.
So, so how, I'm just going to ask you, so how can a property have violation after violation, fines be stacked up and stacked up, and yet this person did allow to buy another, the last debate is violation of property?
It's a different person.
Well, yeah, because did they not get their fines wiped out as well, correct? When it goes to repository?
It means...
It's all, it's all wiped out, and it basically, you're just giving the minimum bid.
That's only the one property, though, that's not the other two properties.
Right.
His son still owns those properties and he still hasn't leaned, and any type of citations or violations leading against him?
And the code violations, those judgments, if they were citations, they're not discharged, they're not a lien on the property, they're personal to the individual that's cited.
Now Josh tells me he had a very similar discussion with the son like a year ago. You know what, plans, what, no...
So how do we get these properties ripped down? Because let's face it, I don't care what he owns, they're thinking like that forever, and it's not getting any better, so how do we do this?
You make a motion to award the bid.
Make a motion, we award the bid for demolition for 160, 160, 162, and 160, 2 and 1/2 West Spruce Street, the Northeast Industrial Services Corporation.
I'll second it. Motion by Brian, seconded by Justin, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it. If you could just note the bid amount.
Should we act on the repository issue as well?
I would think so.
Okay.
What are you doing? I would suggest that we make a motion to send a letter and notify the county that we rejected the repository sale for this person because... So I'm with...
I'll second it.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Tom, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it. If you could send a letter, but also call them, because I don't know what kind of timeline you want.
They need a response from us by April 3rd.
Also make a motion to demolish 133 and 135 Gates Street, that building to Northeast Industrial Services Corporation as well.
I'll second it. Motion by Brian, seconded by Justin, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Last one, I'll make a motion to demolish 216 Pitt Street to SBL Construction out of Orkburg.
I'll second it. Motion by Brian, seconded by Justin, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it. And that will take care of all of our demolition plans for this year and last year.
Couple years.
Sure, a couple years.
You've been banking them for ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, four years worth.
Yeah, here's a question, somebody brought it up, and we all were just talking about this and, and about fines and quality of life and all those types of things. You know, now that the snow's gone away, you're seeing piles and piles of garbage appearing out of the snow, and it's absolutely ridiculous, so I would hope that, I talked to Matt the other day, and I hope our work will get around to checking out these properties and start citing some people, but someone actually offered a suggestion, then why don't we publish the violations in the paper based on code, you know, code report? I mean, at some point, you know, the community can start helping out other than a quality of life ticket, but if I've got someone that's eventually on that list, boy oh boy, you think a little peer pressure and a little bit of community-minded watchfulness to these folks, I don't know if they'd embarrass them enough to do something or anything, just to say, your name's on the list, it's always on the list, clean up your property, we're watching you, and we're going to come down on you as a community. Just a suggestion, I don't know if it's possible to do...
It is possible, and it's been done in other communities, I don't know how much success they have doing it, I've never heard that it works.
Yeah, I just, every so month, they put a top ten of bladed properties, or put it out already, do it, but they categorize it.
Yeah, are you familiar with it ever working?
No.
To motivate?
I just read it, I just... I'd like to do it, in fact, in order to get it still linked with utility people too.
We've talked about that, solicitor with the authority, they have some issues with that, but I mean, this, I don't know if there's any issues.
The newspaper might make you...
No, it's a citation, you know, if you're do, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no.
It's, it's a citation, it's no different than when the police issue a citation, it's what you do like with your blotter report, you could have them for the citations, put it in a format as a blotter report, and that's it.
Because the other thing too is, is we all get calls on certain addresses, and you know, if they were able to open up the newspaper and see that that particular address got a quality of life violation, they know something's going on, because I actually, and Matt's been great about it downstairs, when someone calls me, I'll ask them to run a report on that address, where I can go back to the person that made the complaint, say, look, they're doing something, you know, whether it's, they're cleaning it up, but they're getting fined, they're getting cited, you know, I, I don't know, I'd like to see something like that, I think it, I think... I think it, I think it was a good suggestion. I'd like to see something in a police log as far as citation on the quality of life. Let's start calling the people out that are, that are making a mess of our community, let's call them out.
Your blotter reports, they contain some offenses. Same, is there some offenses?
Of course, you gave them to us, we can just include those.
So when you do something like that, though, is it, if it's a rental property, is it the renter or would it be the landowner?
They're responsible under the ordinance and we've been talking to, they really have to look at what the nature of the violation is and determine who they cite. Because you could, you know, it requires not just, although the ordinance is written simply, you issue the ticket. But it's too easy to just to say, "This guy owns the property, we're issuing the citation." You've got a tenant out there that leaves the garbage out or puts it out a day earlier, puts it out late and insists there. This guy, that may not know about it, you know, if he's not on the property, that probably should be the tenant.
To Brian's point, I know Lansford Borough, I could talk to you about this, Mike, that they were posting delinquent people for their water and sewer. Well, it does no good to shaming them if they don't live up here. They don't care. They're having rentals or rental people.
Again, water and sewer are different things because of the solicitor's opinion on the authorities on, on that practice. It's neither here nor there for this discussion. But, I mean, as far as this is going, you would actually only, I mean, if they're going out there and issuing a quality of life and they're going out to discuss and say, "Hey, I'm, I'm giving you ten days to clean this rubbish up." Obviously, you're not gonna print how big so-and-so gives somebody ten days to clean rubbish up. But when you get the citation, when you did clean the rubbish up and you get your twenty-five dollar citation, your fifty dollar citation, your hundred dollar citation, put it in the law so people know that A, our folks are doing it, but B, like I said, let's get the community, maybe a little pressure to do something. Because like I said, it's, now that the snow's melted, I've gotten, gotten a lot of phone calls on, really have. Turn them into.
I think, again, the police handle their reports, I, I think the community would like that, I think that it would be beneficial.
We need to make that a motion, do that?
I, I would, just so that Barry Isaac and the chief have clear direction.
I'll make the motion that we publish the quality of life citations that were issued on a monthly basis.
I'll second it. Motion by Brian, seconded by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just to comment that, again, these are only violations, these aren't, we're gonna do this in ten days, these are clear violations, they're defiled.
They're also not conviction.
Violations.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion?
Yeah, Andrew Lively here, fourteen ninety, we're on time. How often would you guys do this?
That monthly? Well, the motion was monthly.
These would be just handed to the media when they come in, the police report, so it would be done like on a daily basis, I presume.
Either twice a week.
Oh, twice a week.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to do it twice a week to coincide with the police?
Five elements and such.
Justin, you okay with that?
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, just a comment, just nothing about this motion, but about these issues in general. You know, I think it is, it's, it's, it's good that counsel takes things very seriously and that we push them to the point where we tear down properties, you know, when they get to be really bladed. We've torn down a lot of properties through the years and it's, it's a big expense. We lose a lot of money on water, sewer, garbage, taxes, back taxes on these properties. But if you don't get rid of these properties, they just, they, they're like a cancer and it just makes the neighborhood worse. So, you know, all these things are good, I think Barry Isaac's doing a good job, I know the police are doing a good job with their, with their work. So this kind of stuff helps and it's, it's good information. And if the newspaper wants to publish it, they publish it, if they don't, they're not out of the community. So we, we can certainly provide edited public records. Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I'd have it.
Great. Um, the other item I had to put on the agenda is our garbage and recycling collection contract. I touched on this at the last meeting and since then I've provided everyone with a little more background information. Uh, in two thousand eleven, we advertised for bids for one, two, or three-year contracts. And we awarded a three-year contract to our current collector, Tamaco Transfer Recycling. Uh, that expired, um, May of last year. Uh, at that time, we, council decided to, uh, proceed with the provision in the contract that allows for an extension. Uh, so it was, the contract was extended for an additional year based on the consumer price index. Uh, which at that time, you know, recall that was offhand, but, uh, and anyway, we, uh, informed the collector that we'd be extending it for a year. Uh, so that extension is due to expire May of this year. Uh, the contract, uh, does allow for additional one-year extensions. Uh, of course, we also have the option of putting the whole thing out to bid. So I guess that's, uh, what I'm asking counsel for some guidance on, do we want to extend it for an additional year or, or put it out to bid? Uh, I spoke with our collector and he, he would be agreeable to render a one-year extension if that's what we choose.
I'll make sure we grant you the extension for one year too.
Motion by Thomas, seconded by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? My only question is, how long can we do this? First bid opening was in two thousand eleven, how, how long can we do this?
Can I refer that to you, Mike?
I think you can get away because at times, you know, if you didn't advertise quickly enough and your contract about to expire, you lose that rate. Increase from the case on that I read, it was acceptable to do. But there's a fine line and I didn't find a case on it where, where you can continue to do extensions as a method to avoid the bidding requirements. And you don't want to do that. That's, that's where the issue comes in. Is there a set number? No. But I think I, you know, I, I was okay with one. Two, you'll probably be good to advertise next year, but three, then maybe pushing a little bit, you know, continue out, came out to.
Some sample contracts that allow for, I think, two, uh, one-year extensions, I believe.
I think that would be safe. And I would put it in the contract, I would put that in the language of the next contract to, you know.
More than two.
Yeah.
Ours is sort of older.
We're, with the motions to approve a second extension, so it would turn into a five-year contract. The only other question I have is, we had in this, in this contract period, we did have some safety issues with brakes, with the garbage truck twice. I'm, I'm assuming that those were, I mean, when you re, when you rebid the contract, you know, those issues have to be addressed. If you just, if you just extend it, there's, there's no opportunity to address those things.
Our contract documents do state that you're supposed to, you know, conduct themselves in appropriate manner. You know, offensive language, have the well-mintended equipment.
Functioning brakes, right?
Well, it doesn't specifically say that, but it's implied.
We may wanna put that in the contract.
Functioning brakes, yeah. Uh, you know, keep your equipment in, in good repair, that type of thing. That is, that is in there. And we, I know what the chief, the chief's been addressing those things, what am I know?
They're keeping on their brakes, the last thing that we had with the truck, we checked, uh, truck inspector inspected truck, one of our officers that certified, and the brakes were extremely good condition. And they said they're concentrating on that because they know there was an issue. They're trying to prove that from the future out there again.
I think we're lucky to have anything, anything you have behind your house.
And for a good, and for a good price. And for a good price. And we, we had a good price, it was the same price for three years and now we've got a CPI, so. I think, I think it has been good, services generally good, and they're, they're pretty responsive.
I've been playing in Miami for the last two months since I retired, I put twenty-three bags on.
That's more than allowed, Tom.
That's over the limit.
That's more than allowed. I don't want a lot.
I'm gonna send a letter.
I want to hear that phrase.
Strongly worded letter.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just wanna clarify that they won't accept everything.
And they won't accept twenty-three bags?
That's right.
Right, our limit is six bags, one bulky, they don't take tires, they don't take television. Uh, we remind people of this periodically, but, um, they, they still find their way off the curb. Hazardous chemicals, there's several other things.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Andy?
Yeah, well, let's consider a bulky item anyways. And there in the contract.
I don't have the contract with me, where I can give you the.
Oh, okay.
It's like a couch, a, a big chair.
Two people lift kind of thing?
Two people?
Probably, yeah. Two-person lift. It's not that heavy.
There is a weight limit.
Okay.
I don't.
I'm just curious if you know, that's okay, if you don't know, it's fine.
Andy, you don't pick up at your house anyway.
I know. They did this last week, though, they did.
Car out for a bulky item, for example. You have, you have to, you have to define these things or people might take advantage. A stove, you could put a stove out, a refrigerator.
Like washing machines.
Things like that, you have a washing machine. Well, you can put a refrigerator out at the free on as the remove property. It has to have a tag on it or they won't take it. For an air conditioner, same thing, it's supposed to have a tag on it.
And just as a point of clarification, the contract includes Andy's house?
Yeah.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, includes every household.
I didn't have to call.
We have a few problems with, Andy lives in a bit of an alleyway place, that I don't think they can, you try to truck that house. Andy's been missed a few times, but he's been really good about it. And fully, I think we've got your problem resolved, I hope.
You must have called, I didn't call anybody, so they, they picked it up. Yeah, thank you.
Well, if they don't, please let me know.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. I'd have it.
Uh, I did have two other questions, if I could bring those up. Uh, I shared this, I don't know if I shared this with anyone, but I normally sent it to the finance committee recently. During our last insurance renewal, uh, the subject came up about the value of our buildings. The value that we're working with was established quite a while ago when we had the last commercial appraisal done. And every year, we've just been adding three percent to the values for like cost of living. Our insurance agent suggested that we have another full-blown, uh, commercial appraisal on our building. And they recommended a, a company that they use often for Parisburg, it's, uh, called MIB. Uh, I shared this with the finance committee, we've given them a copy of this. And they're offering to, uh, do all of our buildings, water, sewer, the whole works, uh, for a cost of five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. We talked about this a little while ago and I had neglected the virtual meeting to talk to all counsel about. So I got an updated proposal from them, the price didn't change from last time.
So is that something you'd like to do?
We, we feel it would be an idea, make sure that we are insuring our buildings for what they were.
And they recommend anything?
Yeah, if you think the price of properties in Tamaco went up three percent every year for the last couple of years, it's probably worth going back and reevaluating.
We can also, we have that company here to reevaluate the property values for the borough buildings.
I'll second it. Motion by Tom, seconded by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor?
So depending on their report, could we possibly see some savings in our insurance coverage? Once they adjust?
Well, the, I mean, council would have the final choice over what our insurance policy is. I mean, we can go with their values if we choose, or we can choose something else.
Well, you just wanna make sure we're not underinsured.
Uh, that's a concern. That's a concern. You know, we, we wanna make sure, I'd like to be sure that we have the proper values placed on our buildings in the event that, you know, something would happen.
We have the same type of thing done at the fire school grounds in Frackville. And we actually found that when we did the audit, we actually had property that had been, that no longer existed, that were still showing up on insurances that they found said, "Wait a minute." So, I'm saying we have it here, but there's gotta be savings that they're going to find.
It's, it's possible, it's possible. It could go the other way too. It means to see.
I just, I could, we could just make sure that in a minute we reflect the, the, before approving and the end dollar amount of that contract.
Five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And since we're talking about all buildings, this could be divided up among our three major funds, water, sewer, general.
That was my question.
As you can imagine, the vow, there'll be a lot of work to do with the plans, I'm sure.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. I'd have it.
If I may, I, I, just one more item that I wanted to get some clarification from counsel. At the last meeting, Mike, I had discussed the copay reimbursements for, for the UAW employees. Everyone should have a, a list that was provided to us by Vittigans Insurance, uh, which is our, our insurance agent for that policy. Uh, this is the, you know, the names and amounts for, for March. Uh, I just wanted to clarify.
Is that year-to-date from, or is that just for March?
That should be February and March.
February?
Yeah, I'm sorry, February and March, so year-to-date. At the last meeting, I was just a little unclear on if the reimbursement also applied to the office staff. Is there, they have a separate employment or anything than UAW? And also, we, we did get a question from one of our retirees who is still on this particular insurance, if the reimbursement applies to them as well. So I guess that was, uh, what we, myself and Georgia made it need some clarification on, so we, uh, we'll issue checks to the wrong people.
One retiree inquired or that this would cover all entire retirees that?
Only under, only under the plan, this takes.
Yeah, only those who are retired but still on the PPO plan. You're not the folks that are off running here.
We're obligated, we're obligated to reimburse the UAW because we do contract. We're not obligated by contract to reimburse the, the non-UAW employees, but in a sense of equity, we may wanna do that. Uh, we're not obligated at all to, to, to do that for, for retirees. It's really counsel's decision and we need to give Kevin and George a clear direction on it.
So, non-UAW employees would include the office staff, right?
Correct.
Just the office staff?
Correct.
Could we, could we refer this to Farmhouse Wage Committee to discuss this? Could we take that back? Or do you need, you need to know that, don't you?
Uh, well, we have the UAW settled, so we can address that.
We would just have to adjust this list, though.
Yeah.
Will you approve that stuff?
Yeah, because there's an office, uh.
Not, not for non-UAW employees, I don't believe it's.
There is an office person on the list, there's one.
There is one on the list that's not UAW.
Yeah, there's one non-UAW person on the list.
True.
There's no, it's two, two.
Mm-hmm.
Where?
And we already approved to pay the bill.
No, just the union, just the UAW employees. We are all human.
No.
There are two on this list that are non-human.
Okay, she paid them anyway.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, two, sorry.
Should we take this in executive session to discuss personally?
It's not affecting a particular person, it's, it's.
It's not a lot of money, fifty bucks.
Well, you can see for, for a month and a half, it's four hundred ninety-five dollars, so.
For all, for all of them.
I mean, personally, I, I don't, I think we should treat all of our employees equally, the retirees, I.
That's different.
Yeah.
How many retirees are on a PPO plan, would you know? I don't know, we have five more from this year, five, six, seven. At least seven that I could think of that are within the last two years.
So retired, but, uh.
At least, probably more.
Maybe a second.
Well, I hope definitely seven.
Seven for sure.
Yeah.
These are the people that, when they retire, they opt for when their family, three or single coverage.
Yeah, I think we should probably make a motion.
Well, I don't know, but I want to kind of figure out if council wants to make a decision tonight or defer it. I mean, I don't know, there's still a lot more to discuss. If everybody understands the issue, we can make a motion tonight. I just want to make sure everybody's okay with, with taking action tonight. Everybody understand the issues?
Right, but, but as we said at the last council meeting, we do not know how much money we are going to have to pay UAW members. So we don't know what they're going to be spending this year. In addition to non-UAW employees, and if the retirees are even consideration at this point. So it's like this infinite number of.
But we have a real number now.
Right, well, for February, March.
February, March, right.
Two months.
And again, keeping in mind from the last discussion, we could have found ourselves into renegotiating an insurance package that would not be in our favor.
Like if we were going to try to buy a package that had those deductibles, we'd be spending a lot more than that per month. Five hundred dollars a month. Does everybody understand the issue? It's not an easy decision to make, but if everybody's clear on what the issues are, what decision we're making. Go ahead and make a motion.
I'm making a motion to pay these copayments for union and non-union and exclude the retiring people.
There's a motion by Tom and a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye to that.
Well, these are, these are on the bill list instead of a approval tonight. But if, you know, if, you know, if you want to do something different, it's going to be adjusted.
So you have to be in clear direction?
Yes, thank you.
We may even get to the bills, but.
Why nothing further, so? I won't delay you any further.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Police chief.
Say one thing, Mr. President. If two part-time officers that are leaving for full-time jobs, who are going to advertise for part-time employees, police officers?
I'm making a motion to advertise for part-time officers.
Motion by Brian, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor?
And you're allowing, how many officers?
I'll go all about gathering the numbers.
We're going to advertise for officers, we haven't decided if or how many we would hire.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything want to? Committee reports. Public safety committee.
I've got a few. I'd like to make a motion to advertise an ordinance establishing a minimal qualification for assistant fire chiefs. The ordinance is attached.
A second. Motion by Brian, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just some of the questions, just the comments. What we did is we reworked the ordinance, so we basically combined the assistance into the chief's ordinance. And we did away with language from probably 1915, 1914 with some titles. We actually came up to modern day standards on it, so.
It's been working all these years. They called it that, but not even back then. So that's all been, that's all been spelled out.
And chief, this has been, this has been reviewed by everybody?
Yep.
Everybody's operating this?
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. And just to remind you, it's to advertise, so we'll vote on this at the meeting.
Motion, we'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Schuylkill County, the Schuylkill County for one mobile radio and four portable radios for the ladder truck.
Motion by Brian, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just under comments, this goes back to the radios that the county commissioners, the allotment, they had started giving out through fire hydrants throughout the county, so the ladder truck was held before that. The only I would say is when we consign the agreements, Kevin, but I would leave it up to the chief to tell them how they want them installed and when they need to be scheduled to do that. So whatever we need to do with that.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye to that.
Motion to approve the police department's standard operating procedure for the body, body worn cameras. That procedure is attached as well.
Motion by Brian, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just comments on, I know the chief did incorporate the district attorney's comments and Mike, you had some comments as well, some feelings on it, the F O P did as well, so I believe all that has been addressed.
Anybody else, questions or comments?
Would anybody be connected?
We have received, we have told.
Anyone else? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye to that.
And last but certainly not least, the motion to approve an agreement with the North Central Highway Safety Network for a buckle up K project grant. That's attached as well.
Motion by Brian, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? What is it?
The buckle up for a road where highway safety returns by us for overtime hours for officers. The buckle up campaigns.
This way, this way they could stop them, stop people on the highway, make sure they're buckled.
We do check for these. Okay, there's different ones, there's the highway safety, the buckle up. We did the progressive driver.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye to that. Any other thing, anything else on the public safety?
I think it's not.
Any other committee report?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to, for parking in traffic, I'd like to accept the application for a handicap parking space permit to Joseph Smith at 27 East Alstott Street.
Second to that motion.
There's a motion and a second for a handicap space at 27 East Alstott. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. That's it?
You want to wait? You want to wait?
My lifter's made.
Okay.
Decision on that.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, we have the corner of Greenwood and Broad. PennDOT wants us to restrict vehicles from going and running next to the curb, make a right turn. And I would like to make a motion that we do not do that. Keep the traffic flowing there at that intersection the way it's been for the last.
How long have you had the cars in Tamaco?
So long.
But it will eliminate one parking spot.
Three.
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 No, I'm glad you're doing that because I was going to do it under unfinished business because I've had it on the agenda now for the past several. Is there a second? Yeah, the motion is to eliminate the parking, eliminate three parking spots and create a turning lane. I'll second it. Motion by Tom, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? I do, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I, I drive through that intersection every day and, you know, I. To eliminate three, three parking spots on a block that doesn't have a lot of parking, just so you can get through the intersection two seconds sooner. I mean, there's not a lot of backup at that intersection, I don't think.
I, I think this is great because I, I, yes, especially yesterday, I went through there again and there was a couple of close calls. I mean, you must be going through there when, I mean, it's, it's not that bad, but there are times where traffic's back all the way up past Laundromat. There have been a couple of close calls. Cars going into the lane and still making it, I mean, we've never had issues when it was like that, so why try to change it now to where there possibly could be issues?
Let's, let's put this in perspective as well. So if you take from the corner of Market Street to going down towards Greenwood Street, you have one setback house, another one, and a set of garages. So you have two parking spots and you have a set of garages that you can't park there anyway. And then you have another two homes with another driveway that you couldn't park at the corner. So when we look at the area, I, I've talked to owners of the restaurant there and that particular person owns the two homes where the parking spots would be in front of anyway. He's got no concerns over it. So I'm just putting it in perspective. If you look over there now and see what's there as far as three driveways, is, is three parking spots there a big deal?
I thought we were going to allow for the weather to clear and rob to paint the lines to see if that redirected traffic in that particular intersection, to notify people that because the bridge is open now, it is not too late.
This is, this has been on, this has been on the, and this has been on the agenda, but no offense, but Jonathan hasn't been here to put the question up because he requested it, but at every time, I've asked for something for parking the traffic to come up and, and it's been three meetings where it's nothing. That's the first time I heard waiting for weather to paint lines, I haven't gotten that one before.
It was discussed about putting barriers and stuff like that, but, I mean, even before the weather started getting bad, there was a box painted there and people were still doing the same thing.
I, I do understand.
You can do that if someone's turning left, it is legal to pass, pass them on the right. If you can do so safely, that's my understanding.
No, not. There's lines, there are yellow lines saying it's prohibited, not working anymore.
Oh, isn't it? You want to pull that step right?
Any other questions or comments?
I have, so, under the, under the proposed change, we're going to have a driveway, three no parkings, another driveway, and a handicap space. That's all that's going to be left on that block.
You'd have a, you know, on that side of, on that block, you'd have a handicap space.
That's it.
One regular spot.
Oh.
That's it.
Maybe on the far corner, where it's not good.
Yeah. One regular space.
Where's the regular, where's the regular space? To the rear of the handicap space?
Yeah, it's not indicated really well in the drawing, but it's, yeah, you have handicap spot and one regular spot.
And if you go out there now and you could travel past there during the day, there's nothing that you could park there anyways. It's very once in a blue moon that there's something going on.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm confused, where are you starting, Broad and Greenwood?
Broad and Greenwood, heading, heading west.
Because how did Market Street get?
Market Street's right here, is that block from Market Street to Greenwood Street. It's Broad Street between Market and Greenwood.
In front of Dr. Bulwark's office.
Okay, yeah, because we always turn right.
Well, that's the negative. Everybody does.
Okay.
And they're going to change that.
We already changed it. It's already changed. It already is, you're proposing to change it back.
Yeah.
Your motion is to, to, to eliminate parking and put it away that has never been before, which is no parking.
All right. Now, because it's a state road, we would have to tell PennDOT every day, we want permits for this. This is what we're going to do, or, also we would get a design back from the PennDOT's line and send it back and it will be good to go.
Okay.
For clarification, it was always that whether the turning lane or going straight, and there was a left turn. Right, PennDOT redesigned our town, they reevaluated their tenant, and many different intersections have changed, including this one, there is no more turning lane. It is one direct lane, you make a left, you make a right, you go straight. There is no turning lane on the right side like there used to be, or the straight lane. It is just one lane. That is the way it is currently now if you're PennDOT, they renewed and revised our, our traffic lanes in the community.
So we can't make the right hand turn?
Currently, right, one lane.
You could turn right, but there is no, there is no separate turning.
But I can turn right legally.
Right, but you just, it's just one lane. Before, the right lane was turning right or going straight. And the left, the center lane was only made from the left.
You cannot turn right legally.
Oh, so I have to be in the center lane to make a legal right hand turn?
You cannot turn right legally now. The way it stands now, you cannot make a right legally, is that correct, chief?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
From the right lane. From that right lane.
From that right lane, you have one lane. One lane, that's all it is. Forget right lane, left lane, there's one lane.
And you could turn right from.
And you could turn right from one lane. You can't get in the right lane to turn right.
There is no right.
Exactly, that's my point. Just five steps.
This is our paper.
Yeah.
But again, historically, historically, this was never a right turn lane. It just happened to be there.
And they've been turning, they had a lane for years.
I understand that, Tom, I've lived in this house for 58, lived in this town for 58 years. The point is, is that who's this, it wasn't our decision to, to make in the first place.
But we did.
We did.
Again, it's not, it's, it's a state highway, we have no jurisdiction over that. Again, there's the rules and then it's what people think the rules are.
It was acceptable until the delights came in.
There was never a legal turning.
I don't think there was ever a legal turning lane there in the first place.
Twenty-six thousand, instead of paying $29,000 per year for 10 years, if we get it at $26,000 per 10 years? I've been approved for 29, what do you need to go in? We're done.
Oh, see, I just like working with exact, you know, this is what we're approving for this amount of time.
You're approving a purchase of a loader and a dump truck in the approximate, or $250,000 of financing of 10-year terms at $29,734.64 per year for 10 years.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is that, is that?
Yes.
And that's to include, to have Kevin execute credit agreement along with that?
That's good.
That would be, that's a part of it.
And the motion, in the minutes, you need to specifically list the equipment that will, the F five.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the motion?
Just a comment, and this is, this is something that has been looked at and has been in the works for at least two years. That we've been trying to put a package together for two years now and we just couldn't get there until now. And even now, it's not the ideal situation obviously, but we're forcing it. Josh, you're sure we haven't been?
He fixed that longer.
Throw my two cents out there, I, I certainly think that we need equipment. I, I see a couple of our, of our road through, our street workers come down, Art Brook Street pushing snow shovels this year that's cleaning the streets. But, I apologize. But, you know, the equipment was broke down quite often this, this season. I'm just a bit confused over the motion, but I do agree that we need equipment. Not only the camel, not only the dump trucks, the loader and the faculty, I believe you need all the equipment. And we need to give our people the tools, add a bit.
The motion is, the motion is to purchase a pickup truck and a loader, $80,000 for one, $170,000 for the other. 10-year term. Annual payment of $29,734.
If you put it that way, then, okay. Both of Co-Stars, both of Co-Stars, nothing. If you put it that way, okay.
And that's the way we have to put it. We can't, you can't put a nebulous motion out there to buy some truck at some price at some term.
Is, is it noted that way, Georgia?
I am now.
Thanks for the clarification. Proceed. I mean, it's easy for you to say. And it is, I mean, it is obligating half of our equipment fund for the next ten years. And I'll throw, I'll throw just one more statement out to this.
Our building, our building and equipment.
That truck, that truck with the picture on the wall up there, I believe the tires are running very thin on that and there's quite a few, so that is going to dent into the equipment fund in the very near future. That one right there, I believe there's, there's 10 tires that are, I've got bologna skids on right now. My chief, am I correct?
At least the rear ones are.
Eight of them, man.
Yeah, at least the rear are going to be replaced.
Well, and I'm sure we're going to need to buy police equipment over the next 10 years too.
Yes.
You know, it's, you can't spend it for the ones.
Right, that's my point.
Well, that's, again, that's why I talked a little bit about the current balances in the funds and just tried to, again, make everybody aware that the money, I'm not spending money that isn't there. I mean, I know these are big-ticket items. Clearly, the loader is an issue because that piece of equipment is, has been deemed unsafe. It would, we would be able to probably get a demonstrator model here within a few days. The truck itself would be probably about a three-month lead time. So.
Does everybody understand what the motion is? Everybody clear on it now? Whether you like it or don't like it, whether you vote yes or no, let me sure everybody understands what we're voting on. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. I thought I heard John Trudy somewhere.
He screamed from up there.
If you can find a good reader, why not?
Any other committee reports? Okay, mayor's report.
It is certainly be brief. We got a letter from the Girl Scouts highlighting the gold ceremony taken place in June for a girl from Dutch Hill.
Rachel.
Rachel. So we have already presented Rachel with an award here. I also followed up with an award for Rachel at her local ceremony. I'll follow up with her mother to see if she'd like, like to provide something. But I think she could recycle the award that we've already presented for. I know if I'll see this and maybe ask some questions. If need be, I'll come up with something for her on top of that. Other than that, just want a brief, brief executive session as personal matters. Thank you, that's all I have.
Anybody from the floor wish to address council about any issue? You waited patiently. Thank you.
My name's Scott.
And your address, too?
One thirty-five West Cottage Avenue. Ladies and gentlemen, chief, Mr. Mayor. Purchased the property about seven months ago, moved up here from Allentown with my fiance. Between us, we have nine children and twelve grandchildren. I can't even walk out my front door without looking up and down the street because it's not one-way. You come out my front door, you step down one step, two steps, you're almost in the street. I have people on that cottage, West Cottage Avenue here that try to get by each other, and you're coming up on my set. I mean, if I walk out my door, I got to look before I even open up my door and walk out it. What I'm asking is from South Railroad Street to New, is that, I might mispronounce this, Nuscape Street?
Nescafe.
That's the one. Could we make it a one-way, please? I don't care which way, east to west, west to east, but now that they can go either way, I, like I say, I can't even walk out my door. I got to watch my grandchildren who are twelve and thirteen going out because they can't step off the stoop without worrying about getting hit because it's a two-way street. And it's just a little alley. I don't know if you're familiar with West Cottage Avenue. It's only as wide as this, and two people are trying to pass in cars and big SUVs and, you know, it's just, it's no bad. It is. And then on that, how do you say that street again?
Nescafe.
When they come up there, and somebody's coming from east to west, and they're coming up, they're missing each other by inches, you know? If it was a one-way either up or down, I think it would, it would do me and everybody else on the street a whole lot of good. And I only say from this, from these two points because further up on West Cottage Ave, they park on both sides of the street. Where I'm at, it's only parking on one side because the houses are on the other. There's nowhere to park, only on the one side.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Scott, I certainly understand. I know where you live, and I walked through the neighborhood quite a bit. We would certainly want to refer to our Parking and Traffic Committee to review the issue. We do have kind of a bypass situation that takes place on Cottage Avenue, for those of you who may not know, where folks who come in from the west side of town like to skip the lights and cruise down Cottage Avenue. The thought of splitting to Nescafe may not be a bad idea, heading west to Nescafe and heading east from Lehigh. That way, they both peel down at Nescafe, either which way, and you alleviate the bypass, so to speak. Food for thought, I mean, again, I would think we would pass it off to Parking and Traffic to review it, but it may not be a bad idea. It certainly would, that's not the first time I had somebody come to me about the bypass situation that takes place on Cottage Avenue.
Thank you.
What we'll do is we'll have our Parking and Traffic Committee take a look at that block and your recommendations for one year.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the floor wish to address council? What's in this report? Okay, thank you, Mike. We have the various reports from the departments of the borough.
I think the motion except the reports is attached.
I'll second it. The motion by Brian and seconded by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor want to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Unfinished business. Bills and claims.
Kerry, Brian, and myself were in yesterday and reviewed on bills and on the law and order. Make a motion to pay bills.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Kerry. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. New business. I had Kevin hand out a copy of a notification from the Department of Revenue regarding the CRIS. Any business entity this year that's doing business in the CRIS zone, the city revitalization included zone, is going to be required to file online with the Department of Revenue before two fifteen. There's a website there where they can file. The easiest thing would be to have their accountant do the filing for them. Most, I think all businesses are requiring to file electronically anyway. And so, but I just want council to have, to have a copy of that. If you're calling to anybody who's doing business in the zone. This is different than just reporting that they're in the zone. This is actually to inform these, that they're doing business in the zone, and transfers their return to the Department of Revenue. So we do that electronically.
That'd make it easier for us, Mike, to then try to collect that information if they're required to do so. We're going to be, we need to get ahead of that.
Yeah, the CRIS authority job is to collect the listed businesses that are in the zone and, or any entity in the zone. And then this filing, online filing, is for those entities to report to the Department of.
They're required to do that.
They're required to do that. There's a thousand dollar fine if they don't, if they don't do it. Any other new business?
Can I just ask a question on that, just for clarification? Is that if you are a rental business within the zone, are you required to file? You are. Are the property, and I'm just asking, are the property owners explaining that to the rental businesses within their properties? Because I'm asked and I'm required, and they're not, you know, thinking about it.
Wow, that makes such sense, though.
Yeah, we sent them a letter notifying them, notifying them, so we sent a letter to the property owners notifying them that they and anybody doing business in the zone has to file. Whether or not they're conveying that to their tenants, what you're saying.
But the tenant, but the tenant or tenants would then receive that thousand dollar fine?
They could, yes.
Okay.
If they don't, if they don't file.
And we, and we are allowed to, like, tell them?
Encouraged to, encouraged. That's why I'm bringing it up. This is not a secret. This is, you know, we want every entity that's in the CRIS to let us know that they're in the CRIS and then to go online and do their filing. Because that sets the tax baseline for the CRIS, and that's really where the, where the financing comes from.
Okay.
It's in the law. Because, because otherwise, if they, they just don't report. Next up, your room, and they laughed at.
You missed a daisy.
Yeah.
Any other, any other new business?
No.
Maybe we need an executive session or personnel matter. Brief. I think the motion is going to executive session for personnel matters.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. We're going to go into a brief executive session for personnel matters, and then we'll come back out.